Meeting to order. Mr. Solicitor.
Good morning, Your Honor. Members of the council, members of the public, welcome to the October fourteenth deliberative meeting for the City of Chester. Initially, I note for the record that this meeting was advertised in December of 2019 to be held on Monday, October 12th. Based upon the COVID pandemic issued date October fourteenth, 2020, 10:00 AM today for the deliberative meeting has been advertised in the Delaware County Daily Times and posted on the Chester City website. The city, in accordance with the relaxed sunshine laws, has permitted public comment via email in advance of the meetings, as well as a call-in number six one oh four four seven 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 zero zero, extension seven nine five one. The following resolutions are before council today. Resolution one. To authorize approval of stormwater infrastructure projects. Resolution two. To authorize approval of an award of bids. Resolution three. To authorize approval of an advertisement for the disposal of out-of-service vehicles. Resolution four. To authorize approval of amendments to an agreement with FOP Lodge Number Nineteen. Five. Resolution to authorize approval to ratify an appointment in the Police Department. Six. A resolution to authorize approval of CZM grant submission. Seven. A resolution to authorize approval of an amendment to the FY 2020 action plan. Eight. A resolution to authorize approval of an award of a bid for a fire study. Nine. A resolution to authorize approval of an advertisement of annual bids. Ten. A resolution to authorize approval of the transfer of CRRA properties to the redevelopment authority. Eleven. A resolution to authorize approval of expenditure lists. Your Honor, those are the resolutions. Unless there are additions or subtractions or amendments, that would conclude the list for this deliberative meeting this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Any questions or comments from members of council? Any questions or comments from department heads? Hearing or seeing none? We don't need to do, uh...
No, no problem.
Hearing or seeing none. This deliberative meeting is now adjourned. Good morning again. We will now welcome you to our regular council meeting. We will be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Prior to being led in prayer and the pledge, we ask that if you have a cell phone, that you would put it on silent, mute, or off at this time.
O God almighty, wisdom and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Present.
Jacobs?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present.
Move for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. At this time, we open up the phone lines and the email lines for public comment. Mr. Solicitor?
In accordance with the relaxed sunshine laws, the city has permitted public comment via email in advance of the meeting. And I will ask our press director whether we've received any emails. So for the record, the city has received no public comment via email for this regular council meeting. In addition, the city has provided for public comment via telephone. Number to call in during the meeting is six one oh four four seven 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 zero zero, extension seven nine five one. And the means by which this meeting, this virtual meeting is held is via Facebook Live. It was advertised in the Delaware County Daily Times, as well as on our city website.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. And that opportunity will be presented to the general public at the end of our resolutions as well. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Resolution. The council of the City of Chester does resolve the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester is proposing to construct the following stormwater infrastructures within the City of Chester at the locations provided on the attached list. Number one, stormwater management piping. Number two, stormwater inlets and manholes. Number three, new stormwater outfall at Chester Creek. Number four, stormwater tree pits. And number five, stormwater porous panels. Further, the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester shall comply with all of the following conditions outlined by the city engineer, and said conditions must be performed in a manner that is satisfactory to city council. Number one, applicant shall reconstruct the ADA ramps at the location specified on the attached sheet and provide full engineered design plans. Number two, applicant shall provide detailed design plans, signed and sealed by a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for any proposed tree pits or porous panels. Number three, Stormwater Authority shall take full responsibility for the maintenance and repair of all proposed improvements. Number four, if applicant disturbs any corner during construction, the corner shall be upgraded. Number five, applicant shall provide traffic control for continuous operation of the roadways and coordinate installation with the public work supervisor and the engineer. Number six, applicant shall provide a soil erosion and sediment control plan. Number seven, applicant shall provide a copy of the NPDES permit. Number eight, applicant shall obtain and provide verification that all easements have been obtained from private property owners for the construction of proposed improvements. Further, the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester shall obtain all necessary road opening, sidewalk, and curb permits from the City of Chester Streets Department. Even further, the city does authorize a waiver of the half mill and overlay requirement for this project.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the City of Chester does resolve that the following contract be and is hereby awarded to the following contractor for which bids were received on September ninth, 2020, for the City of Chester and the stated amount. Contract one for Berry Bridge Park Dock upgrades. The bidder that got the bid, the contract rather, would be Mid-Atlantic Marine, thirteen West Susquehanna Drive, Little Egg Harbor, New Jersey, zero eight, zero eight, seven, in the amount of forty-nine thousand dollars. Next contract is Holland Avenue, SR three fifty-two, in township line road traffic signal upgrades. The bidder that got the contract would be Charles A. Higgins and Sons Incorporated, PO Box six forty-seven, Media PA one nine zero six three, in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand ninety-four dollars. Last contract is for Memorial Park football field lighting project. The bidder that received that contract is KC Electric, three oh eight East Twentieth Street, Chester PA, nineteen oh thirteen, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Further, that all other bids be, and they are hereby rejected, all certified checks and/or bid bonds accompany said bid shall be returned to the unsuccessful bidders.
So moved.
I second.
I'm still reading. Sorry. There's another "further." Further, that the successful bidder shall enter a contract and furnish a performance bond in the full amount of the respective contract in accordance with the specifications and to the satisfaction of city council.
So moved.
There you go.
I second.
Are there any questions? Just for the record, we want the general public to know that these are state funds that we receive by way of help from both our state Senator Killian and our state Representative Brian Kirkland. And so we wanted public to know this is, uh, these are state grants, and we appreciate the support given by both. Are there any other questions, concerns? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to prepare specifications for the disposal of out-of-service scrap vehicles as provided on the attached list in accordance with the Third Class City Code. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise the aforementioned bid.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby accept the terms and conditions regarding Article Ten entitled Educational Benefits and Article Twelve entitled Court Time of the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Chester and the Fraternal Order of Police, Wiem Penn Lodge Number Nineteen. Further, that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to execute said agreements for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Stephen Greske to the position of Police Commissioner, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective October fifth, 2020, of a ninety-day probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Oh, yes.
Resolution. Whereas the City of Chester is interested in developing a multi-use trail on Norris Street to connect the existing Riverwalk along the Delaware River to Route two ninety-one for the benefit of its residents, local employees, and visitors. And whereas the Norris Street connector will be part of the East Coast Greenway multi-use trail that, when completed, will span nearly three thousand miles between Canada and Key West, linking all major cities along the eastern seaboard. And whereas the City of Chester is seeking sixty thousand dollars in coastal zone management funding to design a section along the unit and one hundred blocks of Norris Street. And whereas the Pennsylvania Environmental Council has pledged ten thousand dollars in kind services, and the city will be applying for matching funds from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Now therefore, the council of the City of Chester does hereby resolve that it does hereby authorize Thaddeus Kirkland, mayor of the City of Chester and/or his designated to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Chester and the Department of Environmental Protection Coastal Zone Management Program to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, Public Law one sixteen through one thirty-six, was signed by President Trump on March twenty-seventh, 2020, to respond to the growing effects of the coronavirus public health crisis. And whereas the City of Chester has received notification of an additional special allocation of Communication Development Block Grant Coronavirus, CD BG dash CV funds, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars, to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. And whereas the City of Chester desires to amend the fiscal year 2020 action plan to include projects that will address the immediate needs of the Chester community. And whereas the City of Chester has amended its citizen participation plan to allow for a reduced public comment period and a use of virtual public hearings when necessary for public health reasons in order to expedite and facilitate the use of funds. Now therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Chester Economic Development Authority, CETA, to take the appropriate steps to ensure that the requirements for public notification are met in order to amend the fiscal year 2020 action plan.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas the City of Chester advertised for requests for proposals, RFP for fire services assessment and location and scheduled study for which the original proposals were received on January fifteenth, 2020. And whereas Governor Wolf declared a fiscal emergency on April thirteenth, 2020, which interrupted the selection process. And whereas the Office of the Receiver requested a review by an independent financial advisory firm of the seven proposals submitted, which narrowed the selection down to three bidders. And whereas of those three bidders, an amended RFP was submitted with responses due on July thirtieth, 2020. Now therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve pursuant to the recommendation of the Office of the Receiver that it does hereby award the contract for fire services assessment and location and schedule studies to McGarth Consulting Group Incorporated, PO Box one ninety, Wonder Lake, Illinois, six zero zero nine seven, as the most qualified bidder for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Further, that all other proposals be, and they are hereby rejected. Further, that the successful bidder shall enter a contract in accordance with the specifications and to the satisfaction of city council.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to prepare specifications for the advertisement for the following bids. Number one, concrete and aggregate. Number two, by two minutes materials and crushed stone. Number three, equipment and vehicle rental. Number four, bulk waste loading station. Number five, tree trimming, tree removal, and weed control. Number six, furnishing sodium chloride, which is rock salt. Number seven, disposal of rubbish, trash, garbage, and recyclables. Number eight, management for Memorial Park swimming pool. And number nine, vehicle maintenance. Further, that it does authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned bids.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas by resolution dated July fourteenth, 2010, the city council of the City of Chester authorized a dissolution of the inactive Chester Resource Recovery Authority. And whereas upon the dissolution of the Chester Resource Recovery Authority, control of all real property passed to the City of Chester. And whereas the City of Chester desires to return such real property to productive use. Now therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the transfer of the parcels identified on the attached Exhibit A to the redevelopment authority of the City of Chester for redevelopment purposes.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does order and approve an order payment, excuse me, that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated September twenty-eighth and twenty twenty, attached hereto and made a part herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
We have a proclamation, and it's for Billy White Shoes Johnson. Whereas Billy White Shoes Johnson was born in Marcus Hook, Pennsylvania, on January twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-two. Whereas Billy White Shoes Johnson is an alumnus of Widener University, located in Chester, Pennsylvania, whose football talent earned him All-American honors. And whereas Billy White Shoes Johnson was drafted in the fifteenth round of the nineteen seventy-four National Football League Draft by the Houston Oilers. And whereas Billy White Shoes Johnson's professional football career included stints with the Montreal Alouettes, I hope I'm saying that correct. I don't want to mess up no football team, in nineteen eighty-one, Atlanta Falcons in nineteen eighty-two through nineteen eighty-seven, and the Washington Redskins in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Billy White Shoes Johnson's football career highlights and awards include earning Pro Bowl honors three times, nineteen seventy-five, nineteen seventy-seven, and nineteen eighty-three, being named the NFL's Comeback Player of the Year in nineteen eighty-three, being named to the NFL's seventy-fifth and one-hundredth Anniversary All-Time Team, and being named to the league's nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties All-decade Team. And whereas Daily Times named Billy White Shoes Johnson Football Player of the Millennium. And whereas to date, Billy White Shoes Johnson's exceptional skill set as a football player has earned him inductions into the College Football Hall of Fame and the Philadelphia Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas Billy White Shoes Johnson's successes on the field can be measured statistically, and his athletic achievements are innumerable. For I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland and the council members of the City of Chester, offer our support for Billy White Shoes Johnson to be inducted into the National Football League's Pro Football Hall of Fame presented this fourteenth day of October, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Just to give you a little background on that proclamation, Mr., not Mr. Johnson, but Mr. Jim Laird, a good friend of mine, contacted me just a couple of days ago. Although Mr. Johnson lives in Marcus Hook, he played here in the City of Chester for Widener University. He was a phenomenal football player. And this is a Delaware County effort in trying to get this last opportunity for him to be inducted into the Hall of Fame. So each municipality has been asked if they would be supportive of this movement. We have, Billy White Shoes means a lot to the community of Chester and to Widener University. And to help him get into the Hall of Fame by way of our proclamation resolution would just simply be something awesome, not only for the city, but for Mr. Johnson. I think currently, his current age is, he's sixty-nine. Doesn't run as fast as he used to. But he's still a star in our eyes and the eyes of so many in Delaware County. And so the goal is to have a major push from all of the different communities throughout Delaware County to help in this effort. Thank you. Is the lady from Jersey here yet? Oh, I'm sorry. That's a, that's a pride. Come on, Deputy Soon-to-be Commissioner. Come on.
Before I, before I do this, I'm gonna make this. Before I do this, I do this with a great pride. I do rely on Deputy Commissioner. But his family is gonna try and find out. As Deputy Commissioner, and his family is gonna try and find out. His bud is my bud, and I've watched him, Mayor, I've watched him go through this process. I don't want you to think that you have to fill anybody's shoes. Simply tie it yours, each and every one, you just can't talk like you do today. One of the things that Ron Star and I always shout out to each other, we believe in this core heart, and that is work and dedication always gets you to the top of it. You just continue to do the hard work, continue your dedication to this community, and you'll do just fine. Right here, and I'm inviting. Aye?
Aye, Stephen Gresky.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obede?
Obede.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
The City of Chester.
City of Chester.
And that I will discharge?
And that I will discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
Of police, of police commission.
Of.
With my duty.
With my duty.
I will uphold?
I will uphold.
Force the law?
And I force the law.
Fairly?
Fairly.
Equally?
Equally.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To race?
To race.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Or disability.
Good morning. First and foremost, without the Lord Savior Jesus Christ, none of this is possible today. When they say God is good, it's definitely good. I owe special thanks to Mayor Kirkland and City Council for putting their trust and confidence in me to lead this police department. If this ain't homegrown, I don't know what is. Being born and raised in the City of Chester, my mother, on one end, forty-one years at the Chester Wood Company, and my father was a military man and was a Chester police officer for twenty-five years, God rest his soul, I know he's looking down on me, but from my mother's side, they install that mother lovely compassion that a son needs. Now, if anyone near here knows my father, that's a completely different story of tough love, tough love and discipline, but with both of them, it made me the individual I am here today. And I know he's probably going to get upset with me saying this, but I do have to apologize to my brother because he got the discipline more than me from my father, and most of it was my fault, but speaking of my brother, without him in my corner, I would not be here today. The mentor, the guidance, everything from my brother is built into me. I have to say thank you to him because by far I have one of the smartest police officers, not here in the City of Chester, not here in Delaware County, but I would put him up against anyone in this state, and by far, he's in my corner until I end this. Another thing, to my family in blue, I stand before you. I know we had tough times, I know there's been dark days, but I will promise you this, we are going to get through this. We are going to rate for the right direction, and we are going to work together, as much as you need me, I need you guys and women. To the community I serve, I want to apologize to you first. If there has been disconnect with the police department, I am sorry. My main goal for me leading this police department is to bridge this gap with the community, and I am going to do it. There are certain things we are going to roll out, there are certain ideas that we have that we are going to implement and get this done. And last but not least, Mayor Kirkland, I know before when Shakur came up here and said, I got a story to say, and then you said, stories aren't true. Well, unfortunately, this story is involving you and I. In two thousand fifteen, I received a phone call from a late friend of mine, Darren Austin, who passed, and he calls me and he says, hey, Steve, I need you to do me a favor. I said, sure, what's that? He goes, we're gonna have a meeting on Seventh Street with the new mayor. I said, okay, that's pretty cool, I'll come down, I'll meet you guys. So there was a total of six of us, including the mayor. So we go down on Seventh Street, and we sit down, and the mayor tells us the plan he wants to implement, and how we're going to combat crime, and all his ideas, but the whole time we're sitting there, I feel like he's staring at me. And I'm like, man, I just left Liberty, do I got ketchup on my face? I'm like, I hope I don't. I'm like, please, and he just keeps staring at me, staring at me. I was a little nervous because it's the first time I actually sat down with him. Then I go home, and I'm playing with my daughter, Olivia, in the yard, and I leave my phone on my dining room table. When I come in half an hour later, I see the mayor calling me, and I'm like, my God, my boss has called me already, and I missed this phone call. So then I waited, I said, maybe I should call him back right away, so then there was a voicemail that was left for me, and the voicemail is what the mayor told me, saying, I was a major at the time, Major Lex Stephen Gresky, I see so much faith in you, I see so much trust in you, and I know you're going to do a good job, and you're going to lead this department, and I still save that voicemail to this day, and I just want to say thank you, and Olivia, daddy loves you.
Now, now I have to get, I have to get used to calling you Commissioner instead of Deputy all the time now. At this time, we're going to, Mr. Sylister? We're gonna open up the microphone for public comments.
Again, call in number six one oh four four seven 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 zero zero, extension seven
While we're waiting, Mr. Laws?
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council, and everyone. My name is Darren Laws. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, and police officers in the City of Chester. My name is Darren Laws. I had the pleasure of working with Gresky, I call him Gresky, for several years, doing a lot of community things, giving back, and when I tell you he's outstanding, and he goes above and beyond, even if I call him, like, Steve, we gotta go do something with these kids, he's right there. So on the behalf of myself, Steve, come on up. So this is what it reads, Stephen Gresky, Police Commissioner of Chester Police, thank you for your hard work, your dedication from the City of Chester, Darren Laws, and the Chester Mission Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Laws.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other awards, plaques, money, sandwiches?
Your Honor, for the record, we proceed, no calls for public comment.
No calls for public comment. We want to thank all of you for your. What's the name of the hell? Is Ms. Smith here?
Okay, they're asking me to give an update. I don't have the exact stats for the COVID testing, but I want to say that the City of Chester had provided the community for four weeks of COVID testing. The unofficial numbers is around one hundred people were tested for the COVID. We had a very small population of people who were tested positive, but out of that group, one of the high points were, which is those individuals ages under thirty were tested very high, which means they're not doing what they're supposed to do as far as being protected with these masks, that is also a good protector from the environment. So I will have the official numbers from United Healthcare, who was the provider of this initiative, and I want to thank those who participated in, and I hope that everybody here has been tested for COVID close to death, that, you know, that we all, you know, protect that, protect ourselves under that, those conditions, okay? So as soon as the actual numbers and the demographics breakdowns come out, the organization, I will provide it to the City of Chester.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We want to thank United, on behalf of myself and members of council, we want to thank you for providing excellent support and help in the testing, providing the testing here at City Hall for so many Chester residents, and weren't just Chester residents, but they were persons outside of this community who had an opportunity to be tested, and we want to just give them, we want to thank them greatly. Also, we want to remind folks that are home and here that the drop box for voting is downstairs, voter registration is taking place downstairs, census counting. So take advantage of what is available for all, each and every one of you here in City Hall at this time in the lower portion of City Hall. With that, go ahead, Counselor.
Speaking of taking advantage, I just wanted to remind everyone, if you are a renter in the City of Chester, the City of Chester has a rental and utility assistance program ran through Community Action Agency, please reach out to them, the number for Community Action is six one zero eight seven four eight four five one. You have to reach out to them first to schedule an appointment to speak with their representatives. So remember, rental and utility assistance, up to three thousand dollars for rental assistance, and up to one thousand dollars for utility assistance. And as today, you heard that Mayor and Council approved for the FY twenty twenty action plan for additional CARES Act money that we received for BG or Community Action, CD BG, Community Development Block Grant, there we go, sorry, and we have some other plans to do within the community, potentially looking at homeowners in the City of Chester to assist them through this financial hardship and the pandemic that they're going through. So just can, again, take advantage of those opportunities and the resources that are put forth. Thank you.
Okay, in closing, we're going to go into, Mayor and Council are going to go into a brief executive council meeting at the adjournment of this meeting. Also, the first, I've been informed that the first seventy-five to a hundred people that arrive at Liberty get a free sandwich. This meeting is now adjourned.